And it's now seven o'clock on my, um, my computer. And so I would like to, uh, call the special meeting for the Board of Education, um, to order and it is seven o'clock. Um, and, um, it's April 6th, I guess I should probably say 2020, 21. Um, and, uh, the agenda is discussion of the superintendent's transition plans and goals. And since, um, Susan, you are, um, the superintendent, um, and it's your plan, I am going to let you then.
Okay. And I'm just going to make sure I can share my screen, but I just wanted to have a conversation when I can see everybody in the beginning. Um, so really, um, when Kim and I spoke about my transitioning in, we talked about kind of having a three-part series, um, of kind of a retreat. This isn't much like our usual retreat when Leah's feeding us and Dr. Ackerman is feeding us. And we can go, you know, to a place where we can really talk and chat. But the first thing I really wanted to do was you had seen the transition plan. You've probably seen it a few times because I think I've sent it out in board notes. I kind of reviewed it during the interview process. But I told him that as I've gone through it, I'm kind of, it's been a very helpful document because I've just kind of checked off as things have moved along. And there's actually a slide that I want to end with. It's like the first hundred days and what are some of the questions and reflections that we can think about? Because I'm almost there at the hundred day mark, if you can believe it. Time flies when you're having fun. Um, so, but, um, what I did was there's a couple of documents I've sent you. So I sent you the transition plan probably for the fifth time. And I've sent out the CADE document, which is their leadership document. And I found it intriguing. I've been working with a CAPS mentor, Dr. Betty Fieser, who is actually my assistant superintendent, New Canaan. And she was a superintendent of the year not too long ago. So she's someone that has just been wonderful for me to just talk to, for her good advice. You know, um, because she's been a longtime superintendent and she had recommended this document. And I feel like we've looked at this document before. Um, but if I can pull it up and I'm going to start with that. Because when you think about a superintendent's evaluation and trying to, um, really coordinate what my goals are with what the board wants to see happen. You know, that's something that kind of is a marriage that really is, um, very collaborative. And I think anytime the board and the superintendent kind of come together with that common belief system, um, you know, we are able to make so much more happen. So let me just share my screen. And so this document is called Success Strategies for Leadership Team Evaluation, Board of Education Superintendent of, and Superintendent of School. So basically it outlines the goals, which are these are the leadership goals that I have followed since I've been, um, had my own 92 and now my own 93. And this is how I've been evaluated even as an assistant superintendent, um, around these goals. So, um, you know, they, they fall into the category of growth, um, in student achievement. I think the board wants that as much as I do. Um, that's something that's really a common goal on ed leadership, organization management. Um, community, community and board relations are really important. You know, that's something that I've always valued, but now more than ever before. And then your whole personal and professional qualities and relationships. So those are the things by which this document would evaluate the superintendent. And they're also the things that the board can use as a self-reflection tool. So when I went through this document, I just highlighted a couple of things that I thought were important. And this was a collaborative effort between CADE, which is the board, um, organization and CAPS, which is the superintendent's organization to properly communicate the strong belief that both the Board of Ed and the superintendent have to view themselves and function as a district leadership team. And I feel that that's something that we actually do do. And I've, I've seen it happen with Mike as well. So I feel very comfortable, um, you know, in, in that role, teaming up with this board. And then this document had been revised in 2014. Um, and it actually is used as a CADE superintendent evaluation instrument, by which I set goals and the board, um, I can self-reflect and then the board can assess how I've done towards those goals. And they actually use some of the similar work. Um, and you, you saw it in there in a self-assessment. And I think the board has done that before too, in my time here.
Yeah, we don't do it faithfully every year, but that chart that, um, you've heard, um, Mike and I talk about, and Susan and I have actually mentioned it last time we met. Um, there's like a things that we talk about in January, February, March, April, May, June, you know, the different months. And that's where the board could do a self-assessment on it.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been a while since we have done that.
Yeah. So, um, but this is just a good, you know, time when I'm starting out just to kind of take a look at these things. Um, so of course, if the valuation process, like all educator evaluation is set around certain goals that we make and have we accomplished those goals? And what's the evidence that we've accomplished, what we've said we set out to do? Um, and then of course, student achievement is always number one, even in the middle of a, a COVID pandemic. You know, to me, I've, I've been saying all along, I want to know how our students are doing. I want to be able to, um, give them what they need and accelerate their learning so that, um, you can, we can move forward and get back to better than normal. Um, and then, you know, it talks about the belief, um, that it is vitally important that every Board of Education conducts a self-assessment. So there you go, Kim, you know, like you said, the attempt to do it annually is there. Um, and then when we look at, um, the traditional model, now I came in in January. So my June, July eval might be like a midterm eval, kind of a mid-year. And then if we wanted to get to a regular structured year, we could do that in the future. Um, and they did, we, we talked about, should this have been an executive, um, executive session? And unless it was an evaluative piece where you were actually evaluating me, it doesn't need to be. So this is, these goals will be shared with my colleagues. You know, it should be shared really for the community so they know what our goals are or my goals are. Um, and then they, they, they give you kind of step-by-step guidelines, um, in the year, you know, about the evaluation process. And, you know, how the formal evaluation should look. But I know we have a committee that works on that. So I would suggest that we start with this document as a, a good document, um, in discussing that. Now here is where they give you a sample of what these would look like. So I took my transition plan, which I had, you know, kind of committed to when I first got here. And I took these goals and I was able to make another document, which were the superintendent Austin's goals. And I sent that out to all of you too. So I'm going to stop sharing here. Do you have any questions about that document? Have you seen that one before? Does that look familiar?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah, you, you've been doing this for a while, Rita, so I'm sure you.
Yeah. Well, you know, I, I think what I'm going to forward you is, um, the executor director's evaluation, what we developed at LEARN for the, the executive committee. And, um, her goals are tied to the mission statement, which I believe is basically yours, but they, it's actually, and when you, when we do the evaluation of this, it's, it's also tied to the goals and the goals of the, the, of course, it's a little different. It's an agency, but we have our own mission statement also. And, um, you know, and, and she is as thorough as you are doing the half year and pages and pages and pages.
The end of the year. Colleague of mine, so.
Yes. And the end of the year reflection, before we do the, um, the evaluation, she always does an end of the year evaluation that she sends out to all board members. Because then all board members and, you know, so we were having problems getting every board member. Of course, there's what 26 towns to, so we, we sort of simplified it a little bit and do, and did it at a meeting. And we found that worked better than having everybody send things in.
Right.
So I'm hoping we can do something like that because I think it's, it's more constructive. And then we wrote it up afterwards.
Mm-hmm. And that's what I had done for Mike. I would do a self-evaluation, you know, I'd meet with him in the midterm. And that's what I do with the principals. And then I know, and then he would then evaluate me. And he would use some of those talking points, you know, he did it in his final letter to me. He used some of those talking points and I, I would say to him, you know, well, this is my reflection. It's also our work together. So I want to be able to share this with our new assistant superintendent, Dr. Phil Piazza, Piazza. So, um.
Yes.
Piazza.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to meeting him.
I'm looking forward to introducing him to you.
So Rita, um, I am hoping that you would be willing to pass on that to make sure that Andrea has it. Cause I'm still hoping that Andrea is interested in kind of leading us.
Yes. I, I actually sent her some of it already last year. Well, um, but I can, I can download it all and redo it again also.
Yeah.
Um, but I did talk to her about it last summer.
Thank you so much, Rita. Thank you. Um, because I think that, um, I feel this commitment when, when we have these goals in front of us. Um, I feel a real commitment that we need to marry our evaluation to hers. Um, and to make that work. And so any example I think would be helpful. So Rita, thank you very much. And then while I got the, the chance, I just wanted to let you know that Jay, um, is trying to join us, but he is in, um, he is busy doing something, but he is going to be.
I had a very hard time getting on. I had like get off, get on, get off, get on. And then finally I got on.
But so Rita, I'm glad that you're here.
Yeah. Well, I was, I was here, but I don't know.
So as I showed you in that CADE document, these are the performance goals for superintendents of school, you know? And certainly CAPS has, has put those together. And I don't think there are any surprises here. You know, one of the things we need to do is update that strategic plan because it comes to an end in 2022. But it's been an ongoing process and we, we've been able in the last seven years to upgrade all curriculum in the district, in all the core areas, and even in the Unified Arts, pre-K through 12. So that was quite an accomplishment, but I feel like curriculum work is never done. You constantly analyze and revise it. And as you know, with the COVID, thank goodness, we had everything ready to go because we had to compact that curriculum, make priority standards. You know, now we're accelerating the learning, so we're using that document, but we've had to fine tune it all the way along. So a curriculum needs to be kind of a living dynamic, um, piece of work. Um, and so that, that new strategic plan and that strategic plan, you know, with the idea that CADE and CAPS have set forth, that it's kind of a leadership plan between the board and the superintendent. You know, that it's the board strategic plan as well. And, and what are some of the things that would be in my strategic plan that wouldn't be in yours or vice versa? Um, so, and of course, the other thing that we're looking at, um, when we're looking at promoting academic improvement is the new courses that we bring to the board. And using that timeline that was very carefully crafted by our Board of Ed Curriculum Committee. I've already said to the board, to the, um, Fitch High School chairs, that that information would need to be coming to us now for the following year. So, um, kind of getting them ready. And then, you know, looking at what we have, we have one more year in the strategic plan, but looking at our current action plans to really find to them, find to them based on COVID and some of the losses that could have occurred and how we have to really move kids kind of in a, in an accelerated fashion so that, um, you know, that they really understand things better and that we really make sure that they have the information they need moving forward. Um, and then, you know, the resources and materials, um, have to be reevaluated. We purchased a lot of computer software. And while there are still some grants, I think we're going through an evaluation process with surveying, looking at usage. We had done that in the past and we'll, we'll be doing that again. Um, and then of course, there's the Connecticut State Department, Department of Education Performance Office, which is still expecting us to give the S back, the SAT was given and the NGSS for science. So there's that comprehensive accountability system. They might not be able to do a report card or, or have a growth model from last year since the kids didn't take it. But certainly we're going to gain a lot of information that will help us in helping our kids. And then, you know, just annually, the superintendent needs to report on those. And I think that's where you said, Kim, when you and, um, Dr. G had first framed out that kind of monthly organizational chart on when those things needed to come to the board. So we, we can look at that and, you know, we might've had to make some changes because we weren't evaluating in the same way last year. Um, but we will be doing it from now on. So, um, and we usually typically look at S back data. Sometimes I'll give you a preliminary look in the summertime, you know? But as soon as it, um, is not embargoed anymore, I give you a full, you know, several full meetings of what it's telling us as well as the principles. So with, yep.
I'm sorry, can you go back just a bit? I'm being a little, don't, don't take offense, okay? But I just, if this is going to be a document, it's going to be presented to show that you're going to be presenting or posting somewhere. And that's what I under, I kind of understand that. I did, uh, I went through and did, um, some, um, editing. All right. And I don't, I please go all the way, go up a little bit more.
Feel free though, um, you can send that to me.
All right. I'll send it to you because there's a, on a couple of things and.
I had Joyce do, um, some careful review.
Um, a couple of things got through and I was like, okay, I just wanted you to be aware of not being picky. I just wanted it to look good on your part.
Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Ackerman usually does that for me with policy. It's very helpful. So the, the ed leadership, um, is really grounded in relationships as we all know. And it's with the board, it's with our community, it's with the faculty and staff. So here's where it really ties in. I think Rita, you were saying that it's really about implementing that mission, the vision and the goals of the school district. So that's where we're really kind of aligned directly. Um, and, you know, it's in the area of, um, you know, providing leadership around instructional, um, areas. And while I'm going to have an assistant who can help me with this, you know, it'll always be something that I'm responsible for, um, with the curriculum instruction assessment, the evaluation of staff and really looking at the data honestly with the board so that we can uncover and discover ways to make improvements, um, which I'm looking forward to doing. And, um, you know, of course, my meeting with, um, the administration team, the central office team, the AGSA and GEA and other professionals. I spent my morning going from Fitch High School and meeting with the principal and having some serious conversations about things he's looking forward to doing at Fitch. And, um, you know, and walking around and walking around at Groton Middle School. I can't wait to take you all with me to see that beautiful building. And, and of course, the classrooms are really filled up now because everybody's back. So, but I was hearing from kids and teachers that it's, it's good to be back. And they were doing some pencil, paper, math and problem solving together. And they were actually happy about it that they weren't on the computer. So that was good. Um, and sometimes I find things that aren't so good when I'm doing my walkthroughs. And at least I can address them, you know? So it's good to be out and about and meeting with folks throughout the day. Um, and then of course, working with our town building committee as we're, um, getting ready to pack and purge with our three elementary schools that are going to close. And they're going to be making this big move to the two new elementary schools. And we've got the magnet lottery happening. So there are a lot of things, a lot of moving parts in Groton. And then the organizational management. And once the assistant superintendent starts working with me, we're going to kind of look at the org chart and kind of bring that to the board, um, to take a closer look at. But I really feel, one of the things Kim always says is we've got the right people on the bus. And I really believe we do. And, you know, just growing and nurturing those high-quality teams to build capacity, I think is so important. And using data to help us drive it. So, um, so developing the org chart is going to be important. Working with a communication coordinator to really try to get information out there. Um, and sometimes it's not only the positive news, it's the challenges that we're facing, especially this year. And being very clear and listening to people and trying to get, you know, whether it's FAQs, um, you know, where they can really have answers to frequently asked questions. Um, whether it's bringing someone in to the office just to have a chat and see how I can help support families. So, you know, one of the things I'm looking forward to doing, um, is to also have focus groups and maybe do it quarterly. We've talked about that, you know, have coffee with the superintendent. And maybe it's a virtual coffee at first, but to annually, just to be able to sit and talk. We used to meet with the PTOs, remember those days where the board and the superintendent? And I always got so much information from that.
Yeah.
And that kind of fell apart, but we've talked about, you know, and, you know, maybe it's something around a structured conversation or surveying parents. And what are some of the things that they want to talk about? That, you know, we can have a focus group around.
Susan, some of the, um, superintendents in the area have like on Fridays, like a nine o'clock coffee session. You know, and they're invited to, to come and speak with the superintendent and share. So they're, you know, it doesn't have to be every week. Some people, some of the smaller districts do do it every week. But, um, I think it's just a time that, that parents know the superintendent is always available at this time. I mean, there are some, some schools, even the principals do it so that the, the parents could come in and talk. So I, 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 I think that that is wonderful. If they, if, if parents know this is a time that I could, you know, address a question that I have. And, um, of course, you won't be having coffee still, it'll still be on Zoom. But still, it's, it's sort of nice to put it out there. And I, I hope some of the principals do it also.
Right. I, I used to do it as an elementary building principal. And, you know, and they would just be able to drop in and I'd do it in the library and.
Yeah.
Sit around and chat. And, um, it was very helpful to me to, you know, see what their needs were.
And I think they, they feel heard.
Yes.
I think it's a two-way street.
I agree. I absolutely agree. Um, some of the, um, parents who reached out to us early on about some of the challenges, um, during COVID-19, they have been the most helpful. They have served on several of my committees to accelerate learning. They have, um, asked me questions like recently about travel. And I've been able to communicate back and add that to an FAQ. So I'm very appreciative of that.
That's great.
Support, you know? Um, so, and then of course, these retreats, this one around the goals. And then we're going to have Floyd Dugus later in the month to talk about roles and responsibilities that I hope will set the stage. We've talked a lot about those 9,000 series, being able to look at that in the policy book again. So, um, you know, me being new and the assistant superintendent being new, I think we really need to know, you know, for our sake, this will be very helpful. And, and we have some new members of the board too, that I think it'll, and it'll be good because it's going to present, but it's also going to be a discussion with questions and answers that people can ask.
I think one of the important, Kim, I, I'd like to just mention that, um, there is a board handbook that I think is overlooked a lot. We, it was, uh, we worked on this a lot, but if you go to it online and, and I wish everybody, all board members need to read through this. It's not a big document, but we need to revise it because in our mission statement, which has changed, um, we need to put the DEI, we need, we need, this needs to be modified a little bit. Otherwise it's really good. And it talks about the superintendent's evaluation. I mean, it's, it, it talks about the goals of the Board of Education. So when we have our retreat, to me, this is a document that we should be discussing.
Yep.
And somebody needs to go over this because there's a lot of valuable information in there that I think some board members probably were never even given this when they joined the board.
Well, I.
I don't think that that's true, Rita. I think that, but I.
Oh, everybody's gotten it?
I think to your, it should be in your packet because I remember passing that out, that that was part of my job with, um, Mike. So.
Yours.
Yeah. So I think, I, I think that makes sense that we do another small little committee, very time limited, update the, um, board. Um, and my recommendation for that would be that committee then, um, to come up with ideas about how to keep that a living document versus a static document.
I can check Joyce too. She might have the original format and can help with that project.
Yes. I think, well, is Joan, Joan, Joan would also.
Yeah, Joan might also have a copy.
It, it was adopted June 22nd, 2015. So it does, it, it's not too long ago. No, that it was, yeah. So, um, but definitely our mission statement now has changed. Everything else is, I think, very, very much the same.
Well, if any board members don't have a printed copy and would like that, just let me know. And I can put it in the board pack for you. And that way everybody can have their eyes on it. And, you know, when we go to make adjustments, we can update it. That's a good idea.
And it's also on our website too.
Right. Right.
That was actually before my time.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
So this is really about the board relations and the community relations, um, providing leadership and better communications. And I had said that in my transition planning, that was really a big goal of mine, a real focus. Um, and it's interesting that my weekly updates really hold a lot of information that I'm sending to the board. And I've gotten some positive feedback from, you know, all members. I've had custodians write me back and say, thank you for this. I've had secretaries, teachers, so, um, and the pictures go a long way. I don't know if you saw the last two pictures of a little guy that is back at Groton Middle School after being home and big old smile. So those are the kinds of things I get to see when I walk through. So hopefully I can bring you with me soon. Um, so, you know, really, and here again, that we really, and you've said this to me over and over again. It's not just the Pollyanna, the happy news. I mean, we like to showcase the good things that are happening in Groton and feel Groton proud. But it's also the district improvements, the challenges so that we can be honest and clear with our community. And, you know, more inviting of information that can be both positive and negative. And you all model that all the time by really accepting, you know, any kind of information that comes your way and passing on the information to me so that I can really, if a problem's been identified, I certainly want to be able to work with the school communities to help solve it. So, um, I thank you for that. So of course, we have, you know, the things that go out in writing weekly. Um, I talked about quarterly public forums, but maybe it's a little more often. Um, you know, participation in community events, um, and being visible, you know, visible in the schools and visible in the community events. I think one of the, the best things that I got to do when I first got here, a couple of years after, was the cut, the submarine century. And, you know, really meeting a lot of people and, um, being able to spread, you know, the education component through the region. So that was really fun. And, um, you know, making connections. Kim Drellich did another fine job on, um, writing the article about the two magnet schools and all, uh, having all five magnets. And she got quotes from several of the principals and, um, you know, she just always does her research and her careful work. So I'm very appreciative of that. And then, um, the last one I think is really the most important, that, you know, that we're all kind of representing the school district. So it's really important for me to always make those ethical, sound decisions, um, when I'm interacting and, you know, put out what's best, what's in the best interest of the school district. And then it talks about a healthy balance. So I'm taking a spring break next week, but I got people at central office, you know, there for me. I'm doing a sister's trip. So I'm very fortunate, I'm very much looking forward to that.
Fantastic, Susan. Yeah.
So that's part of my goal. And you guys know how much I love my family and, and my friends. So those things are really important to me. You know, and the belief, and I believe that there's no other board who believes this more than you do, is that all students can achieve at high levels and raising that bar and really looking to see who's in the seats and getting more kids in the high level courses, the IB, the AP. And IB isn't just for high level. It might be hard work, but it's good hard work. And it really helps kids to get ready for real world. So, you know, really looking at the data and, and focusing on student improvement and student growth. And then, you know, with attendance, it's been just so scattered this year. It's been hard to take attendance. You know, and I would say, how can we incentivize and reengage kids and have engagement strategies for attendance improvement? I am really on a mission. You know, not only in these last couple of months of school, but all the way through next year and the following to help, you know, this school district improve attendance for kids. And even with some of the summer things I'll be talking to you about on the 19th to reengage kids. And then, you know, it's, it's necessary to communicate effectively with all stakeholders. And I had to add, you know, I just love this part that the board came up with. You know, in accomplishing our goals and a richness of cultures and a respect for all. I think that's so poignant and expanding the work of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee to, you know, to all members of the school district. You know, we had a hundred person team. And we want to make sure everybody has that bias training, anti racism training, and that, you know, we're, we're kind of have that common goal together. So I, I know that's pretty long winded. I can stop sharing my screen unless there's anything you want me to go back to. But I felt that those were really the goals that I had set out to do. And it was really that document that I went through with the Kade document helped orient me a little bit and made it was a little crystallized for me.
Do you think, Susan, that I noticed in one of the statements, are you going to be working with Kade as a superintendent? I mean, like a course or something? Or was that just for a new superintendent?
Well, they, I do take a couple of their webinars that they've had. Had some wonderful webinars for educators. So, and I've shared them with the board too. I feel like Kate and Caps have, have done a wonderful job coming together as a kind of team to both support the boards and the superintendents and educators. So anytime I see something that looks like it might be of value to you, I'll certainly forward it. And, and if, if it's something that I feel like I would enjoy too, I will take advantage of that. You know, having that partnership with Kate and Caps, I think we pay for that. And so I like to be able to use it to its full advantage. And so even the mentorship that I'm receiving is really because we are a partner to Caps. So.
Right.
And then in the transition document, I just wanted to look at that, those questions, that reflection on the 100 days, if you would allow me to do that.
Yep. I really liked that. You spelled it out.
So when I was even looking at this and I was going through it, I was, it was like my little checklist. I kind of, I like planning and I like checklist and I like to check things off my checklist. But some of these are things you check and you check again and you recheck. So, you know, the first goal was really looking at growing those collaborative teams. So you saw a lot of that language that was in here, put into the goal structure. And then, you know, the second one is nurturing high quality teams and, and the organization and using data to help me. And then, you know, finally, looking at, you know, strengthening relationships and taking time, even in my role as superintendent, to meet with folks again. And, you know, asking them, talk to me a little bit about what you want to see. How can I support you? You know? And, and then when I looked at for Spring 21, and, you know, of course, I was doing this probably in December when I was thinking about that. But these were some of my questions that I had, you know. Where are we with health and safety related to COVID-19? And I'll be happy to say that this week, we've got our kids back and they look like they're pretty happy. And we've got a lot of work to do still. But, you know, it's been a long haul and it hasn't been an easy road. I'll be the first to acknowledge that. And then, you know, where are we in the progress of the hybrid remote? And how is our school community doing? They need a vacation. I'll be honest. Everybody needs a vacation. They need a spring break. So. But the transition, teachers are kind of delighted. They're saying that, you know, they're really excited that, to have the kids back and to be able to do some things that feel like normal and less screen time. And then looking at the data, you know, having the student data manager at the same time that I lost Dennis, who, you know, is our, was our director of technology. And unfortunately, they did a series of interviews and it really came out that we had to, we're going to be reposting and, you know, casting our net wider and, and trying to really find, I said, we won't be, I, I really said to the team and Lee was on the committee and she agreed with me and said the same thing, that we want to get the best, you know, person for the job that's going to be able to help lead us, you know, in the next decade or whatever. So we're going back to the drawing board on that one. But with, you know, with the work that Tom has done, really looking at data and really sharing it with the high school, middle school, everything from failures, who's failing, you know, what's happening, analyzing it with attendance. You know, really looking at who are those kids that we need to outreach for now and also in the summertime. So all that work is being done. And, you know, I look forward to having Tom come back to you to talk to you more about the data and what they're doing with it. You know, and the social emotional piece is also very important to us, not only the academic piece. And then, of course, the budget. So, you know, so far, you know, we've gotten it through the town council. And, you know, we have a CIP meeting tomorrow night that Sam and I will attend. And, and then we'll have the RTM next month. And then we still have the FY21 budget. So we want to look at that budget with Ken and, and the grants and really prioritize towards the end of the year. And we've talked about if there is extra money at the end of the year, really being good stewards of that money and possibly either putting it in OPEB or putting it back into Health Savings Reserve. You know, but we'll, we'll keep the board and the finance committee might look at that first. And then it'll be brought to the COW or the board. And then continuously, you know, surveying and finding out, how is this two way communication? Is it really two way or is it only one way? It tends to be one way, you know, I'm giving out information, but I need to be receiving information too. And then, of course, the transition of the elementary school. So, so that's my 100 days. Check, check, check. So. It's been an adventure.
Yeah. What's interesting is that part of your transition plan wasn't the hiring of an assistant superintendent. And you were actually able to do that within your first 100 days as well.
Yeah.
And once again, I think the, the board, I think you're just gonna, he's a, he was a, he's a dynamo. I'm, I'm just so excited about. Yeah, yeah. I was able to participate in the final interview, Rita.
Yeah.
I would request as the chairperson to, to, to do that so that we could have it and
Yeah, Susan said, mentioned that.
It was, it's just
That's great.
It's good stuff. So Susan, wow. Way to rock it, woman.
Well, it's like I said, it's a work in progress and it just, you know, but I think the, our partnership is what's essential. And that's the part I'm looking forward to in my new role. So, yeah.
And Susan, do you feel that, I know with Dr. Guneer, he was also hired December. And, and then we adjusted his contract so that it was July 1st, I think, right after the first year. So I, I mean, I'm hoping the board, we do that with you also, so that we get on the same.
I think that would make sense to get on the same. And I'm prepared though, to even, you know, at the mid year, I can certainly give a mid year kind of so that we can then start again. But if, you know, if you'll allow me to do that, I think it's important to look at the half year as well as the full end year. And I'm kind of used to doing a mid year and then an end year. I think it helps you gauge.
Yes.
And I mean, even having those reflection questions for the first 100 days, as I went through it, I thought, boy, they were pretty spot on.
Yeah.
As far as what I was hopeful for, you know,
Yep.
that we would be.
So Susan, has there been COVID cases at the schools?
Yes, there have.
There have been.
There have been. And we've been giving the information out. We send it, school messenger, we put it on the website. And there's still contact, contact tracing. It's going to be a little more difficult because we have more kids. But we certainly, you know, they might be closer in proximity, but there are the shields, you know, and they are wearing their masks and they are washing their hands. And the hope is that most adults, you know, in our school system, especially with the Fitch High School Vaccination Clinic that's going to be set up next Wednesday for the community.
Really?
Four to eight. Yes, we're going to be, I talked to Steve Mansfield, I've got Sam on it and, and we've got the principal, Kelleher on it. And I'm looking forward to being able to have municipal people, anybody who's like eligible now in Groton.
Yeah, well, students.
Fitch. It's a Moderna vaccine and students only do the Pfizer, but they've got plans. They're, they're going to be talking about plans on Thursday for students and bringing it to fit. Because we're an alliance district and they've prioritized us for our kids.
Right.
So there are some silver linings to all of that.
Wow, we need to put that in the newspaper. That's wonderful.
I know. So I will share with the board as soon as I get the message. It was a really good day for that kind of information. So. But we are, we're, we're following through just like we've always done. And, you know, vast families.
But you don't have to close the schools is what I mean.
We haven't, no, we have not had to do that in a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And are there adults or is it children getting the COVID case?
I can't really answer that. The last one was something that came across my desk from Fitch. And I don't know if it was a student. I, I would say it's been more of the student population recently because a lot of our grownups have gotten their shots. So, so the next group is our juniors and seniors and we'll have to get parent permission. And then we'll see how this testing goes and continues to be able to support. I would love to be able to have our school based health or, you know, our school nurses to be able to help out if children are able to and parents want that to happen.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful.
Right.
Susan, I have a question.
Sure.
Whenever I hear about cases found, I always think, well, if testing goes on, the more you test, the more positives you're going to find. The only thing I'd be interested in is, is if, if the positivity rate goes up. I understand if you find somebody who tests positive, that's always a concern. But I wouldn't read it as something, that something showed up that wasn't there before. I think it's been, it could be just discovered that somebody is carrying something or carrying something that triggers the test. Because quite often the test shows positive, but in fact, there's no virus. Because we think the test is very specific, but it's not always, you get false positives, in other words.
Well, and especially with asymptomatic people, but you don't know if they're then carrying that and able to infect others. The symptomatic ones are easier, you know, if they test positive because they've got the symptoms and they stay home and they recuperate. But, yeah, it's a little trickier if they're asymptomatic. But
Well, my, my junior's been jabbed already. So. I'm sorry, my, my, my senior, my seniors are, I forget he's a senior already.
Really? That's wonderful.
Yeah. No, that's what happens when you're, yeah.
Yeah, I even know McCray's in Mystic now has a Johnson and Johnson. So now, you know, getting to the grocery stores is wonderful.
Yeah. So I just want community access and, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we stay on, on topic, which is about the transition plan. So I just kind of make sure.
Well, that, that to me had to do when she talked about COVID and hybrid and.
But I just, we have to be careful about how quickly we, we, yeah.
Right.
Go off. But Susan, it's cool to like have this and just to realize sort of like you're checking things off and, and how, just first of all, like it's amazing that almost 100 days, right?
I know. It really is amazing.
But it, you know, it's, it seems like forever, but also it just seems like yesterday. So I just really appreciate this. And are there any other questions in regards to the transition plan? Okay, Liz.
Susan, on your Phase Two entry plan transition goal two, okay? Just clarification for me, okay? On the third one down, it says mentor new assistant superintendent with a focus on teaching and learning and discussion with BOE, the possibility of expanding the role of a central office director to support operations. Can you explain that, please? Because I'm not quite sure what that is.
So I'm going to be developing an organization chart when Phil is actually here. He starts the 19th. And Mike and I had done this as one of the first kind of roles that we played and looking at how we're going to be doing the evaluation of the principals, looking at, you know, who's taking on, you know, more of the operations and, and really my focus for Phil Piazza is really the teaching and learning. So I really want him to focus on that. Gradually, I'll release some of those other things like Mike did for me, you know. But I was just thinking of taking, using one of the directors to help out with some of the organization responsibilities. So it's not a different position. It would just be expanding the role. So for instance, when I'm gone on vacation, because I don't have an assistant superintendent at this time, Lori's going to be there in central office, Lori Lapine. And she's really helped me out a great deal during this time when I didn't have an assistant. Not that she would be an assistant superintendent, but she could, she's overseeing, for instance, right now when Ken is out for the couple of weeks with his surgery, she's overseeing the business office. So she's a real flexible person, having that HR background to be able to help support those other departments. So, you know, that would be something we'd have to talk through and I've got to work it out on the org chart. And I'll be talking to Kim too, when we have our Tuesday meetings, but I'll keep you posted on that.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't
Yeah, thank you for that.
I, I, I clearly, you are the people who I need to be hanging out with more because you're picking up everything. And I, I'm such a big picture person. So to get the specifics, I really appreciate it. Nice job, Liz. Nice job.
Liz, I also put that in the goal setting. So I really took what was on that transition plan and I tried to fine tune it in the goals. But if you have any edits I need, please send them my way.
Oh, I will.
Because I don't want to publish it with any thing. You can just tell me this didn't make sense and I can
I'll send something to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I'll do the commas.
Good, because I'm horrible at commas. I really am.
Learned to love them now.
No, never. Susan, this is, this right here is not your doing, right?
No.
Okay, because you could tell them I found typos and stuff in here too. Yeah, I was like, are you kidding me? Come on.
Now, that was, that was, and actually, it's a revision revised as of 2014 or something like that.
2016.
There's some, some glaring grammatical errors and I'm not a big grammar person.
But you spotted.
But when I find it, do know it's there.
Anything else?
Nope.
Sure, do a question. Who was it?
True real question. Who is the student data manager?
So his name is Tom Lonsdale. And he joined us at the last COW and talked a little bit about the S-Back and the tests and the kinds of questions kids are, you know, taking, the answering on the test. And he has just done the nesty plunge. He has worked with the middle school around technology issues that they were facing and we were hearing about and the schedule. And, and he's worked with the high school around data and, you know, so he's been really helpful.
Um, I would like to say also with Tom, I am on the committee to find a new tech person. He is a thoughtful, bright person, nice to deal with. I think you've done a terrific job. And, and I think he's going to be a great addition to our district.
Well, I'm so grateful that he's really also covering the work of Dennis and overseeing that department in the meantime. So it's, it's been great for him to get to know everybody. But it's also, you know, it's, it's, you know, extra work, but he's happy to do it. So he came to me and offered.
I didn't even know Dennis left. When did he leave?
Yeah, he, I had put it in one of the board notes. It happened so quickly. Yeah, he got a job in Newtown. And, you know, he lives in Oxford. So it's been a long commute for him.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
When did he leave?
Gee, I would say, was it January, February?
Yeah.
February.
Wow, I didn't know.
Liz?
Susan, I, I, I love you, I love reading about your goals and everything. But I'm going back to my days when I would have to produce the evidence for me. And so this is the, you know, we used to have to do it on whatever, the computer program and stuff. You had to upload things. I'm not sure if that's something that, I mean, this is the first time I'm going through this because I've just come in. I'm only been here a little bit for a year. And of course, when I get in, three months later, we're out with COVID. So when everything went, you know, topsy-turvy, upside down. So the world turned upside down. So I'm wondering, one of my, my wondering, one of my questions is, how are you measuring your success?
So I think at the end of each one, it talks about the evidence that I'm going to bring forth. And I think also that chart that Kim was talking about is another area where I'll be able to work with Kim and make sure that the board has all of the evidence pieces as we move through the year. So, and I can even tie it back to which goal it is, you know, to make it easier for people. And then when you do a midterm and an end year, like I do with the principals, I did with Mike, I would just kind of keep a binder of the different presentations and information that I would share and kind of earmark them with the goals. So that's something that I'm used to doing.
I saw that there was report, but I'm, you know, I don't know what it looks like. So I just wanted to ask.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are used to the G-C process. So we are used to having the evidence and that's not a bad thing.
No, it's not. It's time consuming, but it's, it's very important. When I was doing evaluations, it was very important and painful because it's not always easy to access. Or it's very, you have to take time.
Right.
But I think it's essential.
Yep, yep, I agree.
And we are evidence-based.
Yeah.
We are. Yeah.
Anything else?
No. You know what? I'm really impressed with the, the board coming, getting together and coming to all the meetings. I mean, the board participation, the attendance is wonderful. It, it's, it's really remarkable. You know, everyone needs to pat themselves on the back because I, I've been part of this board where, you know, we had to not have meetings because we couldn't even get five people over the years. So this is very impressive.
And, and we have more meetings, you know, we have two CO. We have all those budget meetings that we've gone through. So.
And DEI meetings.
Yeah.
So if I'm not hearing any further comments, I am.
Look at Andrea.
Are you ready?
Are you ready?
Yes, have a wonderful trip next week, Susan. Enjoy.
I will.
Yes.
Re-energize, Susan, re-energize.
I will. I might relax, actually.
Yeah.
Read a book.
Susan, are the goals on the website?
Matthew, this is not, this is not a public comment meeting. This is just for the board.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Say goodnight, Gracie.
Say goodnight.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Goodnight.
Bye.